Good evening. This is a meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is 7:01 and the date is October 13, 2009. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. The board consists of five members and two alternates. The alternates taking full part in the discussions and becoming a voting member in the absence of a member or when a member abstains from conflict of interest. Present tonight are members Greg Lavelle, John Golsey, Betty Hollow, Kay Towsley, Lisa Carson, and myself, Michelle Drabold. See, alternates, then. Kay, you will be voting tonight?
I will be.
Okay. Also present are zoning administrator John Paskey and Secretary Paul Eschenbacher. The board operates according to the following procedure. One, the chair will name and describe the case. Two, the zoning administrator will state the basis of the objection and any applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. Three, the appellant or the representative will give reason why the appeal should be viewed favorably. Four, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Five, anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard. Six, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. Seven, if necessary, the appellant or the representative will offer concluding summary or rebuttal remarks. Eight, testimony from the floor shall be closed. The board will deliberate and render a decision. According to Athens City Code Section 23.07.03B, the board has power to grant variances from the strict application of the code provided the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, the spirit of the code is observed, public safety and welfare are secured, and substantial justice is done. According to Athens City Code Section 23.09.10C, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the board finds, based on direct, specific findings of fact, that each of the following conditions has been supported. Practical difficulty and undue hardship. Because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. Exceptional circumstances. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone and the same vicinity, while a granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone and the same vicinity. Minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of a specific piece of property or in the intended use of said property for which variance is sought, one or the other or in combination, is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. There are four cases on tonight's agenda. Number one is case number 09-16V, which I believe is withdrawn. That's the withdrawn one, sorry. Okay, case number one again. 09-19V, and the appellant is Chris Wolfe. It's 108 West Union Street. Case number two is 09-20V, 906 East State Street. It's the AMA Sign Company chief tobacco. Case number three is 09-21V, 49 Stewart Street, James Cody. And case number four, 09-22V, 56 Stewart Street, James Cody, appellant. The board is required to take testimony under oath. Would anyone wishing to speak concerning any item on the agenda please stand if going to speak? You gonna speak, John? Or anyone else? Is anyone gonna speak? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you will present to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Okay, our first case, number 09-19V. Mr. Eschenbacher, please.
I have very little to add to the information that you have before you, other than to say that as for that rear patio there, even if the variance were to be turned down, they'd still be allowed to go back there to smoke. This is just basically about serving his beer back there, drinking his beer. So if you have any questions.
So what you're saying is there's basically a patio or a cemented area back there already?
Yes, there's already been one constructed back there. He got an approved permit to build that, and he tiered the hillside up behind it, but as I understand it, only just the bottom tier or level, which is the concrete ones that was to be used, at least for now.
Could you say that again?
He, behind the bar.
Yeah, I've seen it, the last thing he said.
Oh, just that the, with the upper tiers and stuff, as far as I understand it, he's just gonna be using the bottom tier of the concrete as well. He can address that more specifically now.
Well, given the fact that he's got a permit to build this, and smoking is presumably allowed, does there need, under those circumstances, to be any further improvement to the patio?
No, not just, not for that use, no.
Okay.
If, as I understand it, from the, if the variance were approved, then the, I think the state liquor control board has to make sure that that is in a completely enclosed space.
So it would be safer and accessible to the public?
And what do you define enclosed? If you have the foreside already enclosed, nobody can access it, is that called enclosed?
From the outside, yeah.
Or do you have to have a roof to be enclosed?
No, you don't have to have the roof to be enclosed, it just has to be, you can't gain access from the outside through normal means.
Well, I thought the variance in here was that, which is, has to be enclosed. If it's enclosed, then why are we discussing this?
Well, it's...
It's the conduct of business outside.
So he's asking for variances, or be it outside?
That's what I meant, you know, if you want to conduct a business, what do you mean by enclosed? Do you have, do you have a roof over it, and foresides covered?
If he had built, somehow built this so that there was a roof over it, and, you know, four walls surrounding the back of it and stuff, it wouldn't need to be here. It would just be added space.
Yeah, I understand. But the four wall is not sufficient, right, to be enclosed for conducting business?
No.
Well, it still acts as a patio, so it's not literally inside. And what is business? I mean, what if people take their beer and cigarettes out front versus out back?
Well, you can't take the beers out front, because that's taking them out, purposes are outside. So it would be the, be able to drink beer back there, and if you wanted to expand your services, to have waiters or waitresses back there taking orders from people who are back there, and bringing their beer too.
And then if there were any other things that needed to be built to make it safe, the liquor control board would...
Well, they're more concerned about just the rules about how access to that outdoor part where liquor is served, not so much specifically safety, but just access.
And the access is through the back door, up the steps?
Yes.
And up some steps?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and, Mr. Wolfe? Please state your name and your address.
You want me over here, right?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'll be like on TV usually. My name's Chris Wolfe. I live at 8560 Elliottsville Road, in the old Good Speed House, great old place out there. I've owned and operated the Smiling Skull Saloon since 1993, 16 years. Prior to that, it was a bar back to 1985, and prior to that, where the Smiling Skull Saloon is now, that was actually in Hope and Beer Garden for the Little Ritz. Okay, so, that was actually a beer garden next to the cat's den and the bicycle shops apartments years ago. I'm seeking a variance in the city code, so I may have outside beer and a smoking garden out back. As Paul said, even if we don't have the beer, that had to go through a few hoops, but if everyone wants to go out back and smoke, they're allowed to go out back and smoke, which I think is better than them being on the sidewalk out front. It seems like though people won't go back there unless they have a beer in their hand. They want to be outside where they can be seen, see their friends, and that sort of thing. So I think by giving permission to have beer back there, they're gonna be off the sidewalk. We won't have that litter problem, we won't have that cloud of smoke to walk through. That's what I'm thinking. My liquor license provides for only the sale of beer and wine, no hard liquor whatsoever. I have the only license in town like that. I have to close at 1 o'clock, so 12:30 we're winding things down. We're not open until 2:30 like every bar uptown. That area in the back could be used year-round theoretically, but let's face it, when it's cold out in the wintertime, I don't think people are gonna be back there drinking beer. So it's mainly a summer time, a warm weather place for clientele. This past summer, and I can't speak to every summer, of course, but I, I think the apartments, at least on the cat's den side, were pretty well empty all summer. I'm not sure about John in there, if they may have people over there. Okay. But, you know, the enrollment's down in the summertime, so that's always a possibility. All the work that we've been doing to the property so far, including the work we've done over the years, has always been done by local companies, always paid a fair wage. Everything I've done to the building has been to make it more attractive and an asset to the community. I have a picture of the bar when I bought it, with the holes in the sidewalk, pretty rough looking. I paved the sidewalk out front, stamped it, I think it's the nicest sidewalk in Athens with those stamped stones. I put the awning up, the new sign, the antique benches. A few years back, I was working with Ray Hazlitt and Wayne Key. I obtained those two antique lamp posts. I had the city remove that crooked one that was there for years. I personally power those two lamp posts and pay for the electricity to light the streets out there myself. The Smiling Skull Saloon is sort of right in the wave of the motorcycle enthusiast thing, and in the summertime, we get a lot of tourism there, a lot of bikers come in from surrounding states. They stop in for a couple beers, a tee-shirt, they gas up in Athens, they eat in Athens, they stay overnight in Athens, you know. If they're not coming here for McDonald's, they're coming for the Smiling Skull, and so I'm putting the envelope as far as I can, you know. You know, and as things, well, I like things to evolve a little bit, you know, these people are coming back and coming back, 'cause that's a regular stop, and so it's nice if they have something different to look at next time they come around. So I think that beer garden out back would be a nice addition. As a non-smoking member of the community, I'm appalled at the mess of the smoking citizens of Athens, that there were other smoking citizens of Athens are making of the streets and sidewalks, as well as the smoke cloud one must walk through on these sidewalks. I sincerely feel that rear enclosed smoking and beer garden will benefit my business and my town and the neighbors around me. I think to get those people off the street and get them out back is a good idea for everybody. As a business owner, I've been doing this for a while. I've always monetarily helped support my sister's place, March of Dimes, Little League Baseball and Soccer Teams, Copperheads Baseball sponsor, Ohio Brew, Week in the Athens Music Festival, and you guys got some testimonial letters, you know. Of course, it's not a fly-by-night place down there. I've talked with, I've got pictures here, I'll let you get to you guys. These are all the other beer gardens in town. Look at the pictures carefully, you'll see that every one of them has apartments in pretty close proximity. I talked to Eric Coon, who manages the ones next to Courtside. No complaints about noise. Most people, he told me, they're renting an apartment near bar, they know what they're getting into. Talked to Tony Silvestre, who has that small patio to the left of his building, apartments right overhead, no complaints, he told me. Jamie Sparhawk, Good Toscano's, no problems with their outside beer garden. Art, that owns Jackie O's, he's expanded his beer garden out back, never a problem, he told me. And I talked to Chris Roach at the Pigskin, no problems back there. And when I talk to him about problems, are they have people throwing stuff off there? Are they breaking things against buildings? Are there any noise complaints? Everyone said no. Talked to John Worten a while back about brownies. He's had, of course, we've all read in the paper, he has had some problems with complaints up in North Congress Street, but adds to, his apartment's right over top of the beer garden, he's had one complaint. I came down Union Street today, stopped at the Union Street Cafe, I could not talk to the manager there, but I talked to the Todd Zorn of Athens Computer, told him what I wanted to do, thought it was a good idea. Talked to Eric, that owns Grinders, across the street from, across Depot from me, he likes the idea. Jamie Sparhawk, a ways away, thought it was a good idea. Demetrius Pocos owns the property behind my bar, he owns a rental house diagonal across, behind my bar. He said no problem, he thought it was an asset. I talked to two tenants that lived over the cat's den last year, asked them if they had any noise problems. We do have four skylights on the ceiling, we have live bands. They said noise was never an issue with them. I talked to one former tenant at the bike shop, you know, she said, "I'm by a bar, no problem." Talked to one tenant that lives there now, she didn't think the beer garden would be a problem. Of course, you know, every different tenant could have a different take on things. Let's see. If you look at the times, the time of the year we're gonna use the beer garden, and we think about May through September mainly, of course, it can come in duck over, obviously. And then you think about, and I have a small customer base down there, it's not like some of these bars uptown, if you drive through town on a Friday night, you have lines outside these doors. Unfortunately, that's never happened down at my bar or the cat's den next door. It'd be nice if it did, but, you know, when we're, I just never have a real big crowd in there. Now, and if, if half that crowd is out back, I think that would mainly happen on a Friday night, or a Saturday night, or a Sunday afternoon, and that's only five months of the year, and that's only two days a week during those five months. I'd say, I think it's a small fraction of time where there's gonna be a large capacity of people back there. I think some people might get the idea there's gonna be 100 people back there, smoking and drinking. And I know my neighbors are concerned about anything illegal going on out there, but obviously, if anything creeps up like that, then we have to deal with that on a case-by-case basis. You know, whether people are smoking pot at any of these beer gardens, I can't tell you. Whether they're throwing beer bottles, I haven't heard of that. I haven't read any violent stuff like that, and I haven't heard anyone getting arrested in these beer gardens out here, you know. My clientele on the other side is also a higher, higher age than I think the bars uptown, you know. I think we're, it's more mature. That's not to say we haven't had trouble in the past, and, you know, it's been addressed. Obviously, if you get, have too much problems at the bar, number one, I've gotta take care of it. Number two, if the police have to continue to take care of it, and then you get the liquor control board, if liquor people involved, eventually, you know, they're gonna revoke my license. So, you know, we have to handle that on a case-by-case basis. That's all I have. I think it's just a good situation, I know it's gonna be a good situation for me, and I think it's gonna be a good situation for the whole town there. And I'll work with anybody, my neighbors, if there's, you know, if you guys think it's a good idea, you know, I have no problem. I've taken John and Maxine up there, I've taken the matters up there and showed them what I wanted to do. If they have some concerns, I'll probably work with them the best I can. I know Betty's concerned about some safety issues, but anything I've done, you know, obviously, we don't want bright lights back there. You know, I can put myself in the place of a tenant on either side of me, for goodness sakes, and I'm not gonna have lights, I want low lighting. You know, I've talked to the state, and the guy that does the state inspections on these buildings, and, you know, it's a minimum that you have to have for the steps, but, you know, everything has to be up to code, so I'm not gonna be pulling a fast one back there. Okay?
Mr. Wolfe, I know you already have told us about, showed us the place, and I didn't see any plans of how this is gonna look like. If you could maybe for the record, so that we have it, that you just mentioned this buffer walling that you're gonna put in there, just very briefly, maybe, just for the record, so we know what exactly is gonna be there.
Okay, as you're pumping the rear steps, I don't want people close to the cat's den building, so as I told you today when you were there, and Betty also, as you pump the steps, you're gonna actually come through a doorway into the center of that back area. I'll probably put a sign there, not to be loitering, close to this building. Some sort of sign that probably says, "Hey, you know, I have neighbors here, be nice." On John and Maxine's side, I showed them, as those terrace walk, terrace areas are here, and we have a row of posts here, that's gonna be about five to six feet, I didn't really measure, I measured it one time, but I think from their building, five or six feet, I think John might know. There'd be a solid six-foot wall across there. You know, if someone thought it should be taller, that's fine. If you go to the liquor department, what that liquor department requires is a fence, even one of those plastic chain-link fences. So I'm going above and beyond that with a six-foot fence. And on both sides, I would never think about blocking someone's window, because I think that's goofy. I certainly don't want a window blocked up. When I drive through town, see any apartment windows with a complete piece of plywood, it looks like heck. Across the front where my roof is, of course, their tenants won't be able to look that way, I wasn't planning on building a six-foot high fence across that roof, but obviously, I'm gonna build a fence three to four feet, 'cause I don't want anybody on that roof. They go on the roof, they may go through the roof, they may fall off the front to the sidewalk, so I don't want that liability, so definitely, there's gonna be a fence across the front too. And, you know, in order to get back there, you've gotta come through the bar. I've had some reports of people, I guess they're coming through the woods right now to hang back there, possibly drink beer. I think they're coming through other fields and drinking beer somewhere, you know. So I'm happy, you know, I gotta get a fence around there no matter what, but if they wanted to use it after this is finished, they obviously have to come through the bar, you know, with my short night hours, they can go uptown after that.
You have a permit now for smoking on the first level?
You can't, by the state laws, you cannot smoke in a public place, that's inside the bar. So when we put the door amp so out now, without the back door, which we just installed in May, people are going out the front door and smoking. Once I put the back door on there, it seemed to me like it was a no-brainer that I have a back door and I have property, send them out back. But as I mentioned earlier, people want to be seen, they want to talk to people, so they're standing out front. I have a few people that'll go out back and smoke, I provide some ashtrays over there.
Well, I guess, Angela, my question is, there are now basically three terraces?
Right.
And you have a permit for people to stand and smoke on the first level of that only?
They can go up to any terrace they want to and smoke on there, there's no problem with that. You know, so, again, there's no steps there, I'm not gonna, if this does not pass, and they want to go back there and smoke, I probably will not do the extra, I'm not gonna make those additions of steps back there, so most likely, there's no steps.
I guess I was thinking that maybe that was part of the permit, that it was just that first level?
No.
It's just part of that first level?
It is part of that?
Not the whole first level?
Well, and at the moment, of course, there are no steps, so you'd have to make a big effort to...
I might utilize that whole area for a beer garden if I can.
All three levels?
All of my property, yeah. There'll be steps up to every level, we have fence around the whole thing, there'll be fences at each level, so people can't fall off each level. I might use, yeah, just like that restaurant outside of Santa Fe. It's real nice, it's a terrace back there, look out, you can see the train station beautifully off there, Mexico, you're looking at other things, but a terrace, you know, that's where I got the idea from. Plus, it's a steep hillside, and terraceing was the way to go. It's gonna look nice, hanging plants.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in general comment? Or in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, all the way, and your name and address, please.
My name is Maxine Rantain, I live at 74 Second Street in Athens, and I'm the owner of 104 and 104 and a half, West Union, which is next door. I guess it's more of a question, I don't know, to Chris or to the board, or to Paul, is there an ordinance, would they have to have an exit from the terrace?
Yes.
And where is that gonna lead? Because if, if you have to leave and go back down the alley to get out, that means we're gonna have to open that door again, which is gonna lead back to the problems.
You have to go back through the bar to go out?
No.
I think liquor, liquor control probably requiring to have an egress in the fence to get out of the terrorist area somewhere. Not that they would use it to come in and out, but I imagine, going to code in liquor control would probably require you to have some sort of...
I talked to the state inspector about the steps, when I talked to him about this and where you have to have, I'm gonna have it at the top of the hill, the top is here, there'll be a door that opens out, that does not open in. Have a panic guard, make it, or gotta empty out Mr. Prokers' property in case of emergency.
Okay.
That's what he told me. I said, "Now, I'm emptying an office," and he said, "It's an emergency, you empty out wherever you can."
Is there gonna be like an alarm on it or something, so you know if people are going in and out of it, or blocking it open? Because I know, like even behind, when it was Ohoolies, they, people let people in and out of the back all the time.
I get, that's a good question. You know, those panic guards, if you have to install a pad here, state fire guards, you know, they only work going out, so I guess that's something that will have to be checked regularly, if something's not proper.
Maxine?
Sorry?
Chris isn't gonna be on tape.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Talk to us, and then we'll have Chris come back and...
And then go back to him.
Right.
What I was asking, because there's a narrow alley between 104 and 108, and we had problems with people going in that alley for all kinds of different reasons. And we finally figured out how to block it off, so that the utility companies could still get in there, but just people off the street couldn't.
Right.
And what I was concerned about was if this enclosure has to have an escape, you know, if they don't have it so that it's only in a case of emergency, if people can wander in and out through that escape, or if they have to have it as an escape that uses that alleyway, it's gonna make us unlock it again. And then we're gonna have, not necessarily their clientele, but just people going in between those two buildings, 'cause it's a nice, dark place to do whatever you want.
Did you have any other concerns? We'll have Mr. Wolfe come up and address.
I'm a little concerned, but I would have to see, because I know that we accepted the variance if he put up a wall, even for the smoking. So if it's a wall, that, because all the other beer gardens that he's talking about have apartments upstairs from it, but not like, this is the window right here, you're standing at that terrace, and the windows to those apartments are right there. And a lot of times, they're women. And it can be a little nerve-wracking to look out your window and have some guys standing right there, drinking or smoking or whatever. And that's why it's like, okay, I know that the fence may not be great, but at least it's not staring at somebody. The noise, I know, as long as they're not gonna have live bands outside. Who knows? You know, I don't know, because that gets really loud, and that would be a, quote-unquote, brownies problem. But the tenants do know they live next to a bar.
Right.
And that, the one thing is that, yes, it closes, it, what, do you close at 1?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else you'd like to...
Any water?
No, the rest of it's in, kind of in the letter, I think, that John...
Well, I love the letter, it's very brief. Says, "We support the installation of privacy fencing in the smoking area..."
Right.
"...on the cement pad behind Smiling Skull Saloon, require with the fence..."
That was the letter.
"...reset back a safe distance from the apartment windows, three to five feet, so as not to block the secondary egress for emergency purposes."
That was the May letter for the smoking.
Okay.
And then they were like...
Oh, okay.
There are concerns about...
I see this other letter.
Yeah.
And maybe you should read part of this other letter, and to the record. Okay, so this was submitted October 10th. "We, the owners of 104, 104 and a half, West Union Street and Cyclopath Bicycle Shop, do not support the variance sought for outside business activities. Beer garden by Chris Wolfe, 108 West Union. We feel that to allow this variance would be counter to the purpose of promoting public health, safety, and general welfare of all the occupants in the buildings adjacent to 108 West Union." welfare of all the occupants in the buildings adjacent to 108 West Union. Issues surrounding close proximity of the proposed area where alcohol would be served would reduce the well-being of the current tenants of 104 and a half West Union, as well as that of the owners and staff of Cyclopath. The rent, ability, and property value would also suffer if such a variance was allowed.
Okay, and I think we can just skip this part.
Right.
And go over to the second page where it cites, in our estimation.
And basically, the rest of the letter just cites some past history. And then we go to, in our estimation, for proper oversight, security lighting would need to be installed, and such lighting would be too close to the windows of apartments 1 through 3, causing significant disruption. Noise issues and other unwanted activities would most certainly arise with alcohol consumption adjacent to the exterior walls of the apartments at 104 and a half West Union. Tenants of apartments 1 through 3 would be able to look out their windows and be at or close to eye the level, eye level, with users of the proposed beer garden. And substantial efforts would also need to be taken by us, the ownership next door, to prevent trespassing at 105 and a half West Union in the areas between or behind the building, and also onto the roof, for such a variance granted. You mentioned that. Yes, Maxine?
This is without knowing the plans of all the fencing.
Okay.
Because I think there was supposed to be fencing put in for smoking, and there isn't any on our side.
Any other questions for Maxine?
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Well, not in opposition, I just want to make part of the comment. Part of her concerns was about the access that might be required for that garden. In other words, the way to get out of the garden. Part of the reason for that requirement is fire safety, so somebody can get out. And I don't think it would be approved that the access out of that beer garden would be that narrow alley between two buildings, because in effect, you'd be funneling people back towards the building.
A burning building, possibly.
Highest probability with fires. So I would assume, I'd be reasonably sure, that the exit from that beer garden would not be down that alley, but would be somewhere else in the fence. Either, as you suggested, up at the top, at the back, or, or behind the cat's den. If you walk up behind there, there's a natural way to get from those tiers of their beer garden to a parking area and concrete area behind the cat's den.
But then that really would necessitate steps from the primary level up to the other two tiers, if that were going to be an emergency exit.
Again, that's something probably Mr. Wolf can address, as to whether the bottom tier can access that area behind the cat's den, or whether you need to get up on an upper tier. I think he would have to get up on an upper tier.
I think he might have to be on the top tier, in which case, there would be steps, which he had told me he intended to do if we gave him the variance, that he wanted to use the whole thing, so.
Mr. Wolf, would you like to come back?
I missed part of that last part. Like I, when I talked to the state inspector about the fence, I was concerned about having an exit there also. And it all comes down, if the building is sort of interesting. If the building catches on fire, and you're in the beer garden, the number one way of egress, the number one way, would be back down the steps and through the burning building out the front door. I found that sort of interesting. The second way, because if you measure the farthest point of the beer garden, the second way, I was going to have it go through the cat's den parking lot until I built that fence there, but I couldn't do that, because that measures too close to the front door. So the second way has to be up to the three tiers, which will have steps, and out a door. Now, after talking to this gentleman, they do make alarms, so that door will be one-way only. Push the panic bar, alarm goes off. It's at my mother-in-law's nursing home like that also. So we'll have the sign that you've probably seen, and alarm will go off if you open this door. So I think that'll take care of that. I missed the part about the cat's den parking lot. You can't, you can't get into the cat's den parking lot off my property once that fence is there. You'll have to, if you went out that back door, over the hillside to Mr. Prokous', you'd have to walk down alongside of the cat's den parking lot, and onto Depot, and then into the parking lot, if that was what you guys are talking about. I just want to stress that I want to be a good neighbor, you know. I've gotten along with Maxine and John and A.W. And, you know, if I have to extend the fence off, you know, so it, up beyond the back of their property, so people don't want to walk around this way, but, you know, I can't imagine sort of, you know, it's like the bush out there. I can't imagine anyone going out that way. The other thing I was, I had on my notes, and I forgot to say earlier, was if this thing, whole thing flies, we were in Savannah recently, a little hole-in-the-wall bar, same kind of place, no room for cooking, nice table, though, menus of all the local bars that delivered. If you're back in there, you know, I'm going to have the menus there, order from the local restaurants, not the chains, of course. And, you know, have your food delivered right to the Smiling Skull. Also, I told John and Maxine and Mr. Matters to the left, you know, I think it could possibly be an asset, you know. I told him, I said, you know, this, it's nice and sunny and hot back there. Now, your tenants want to just come back here and study at one of the tables back there. I don't care if they're drinking, not drinking, not smoking, sit out in the sun, you know, use the property, I don't care. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have another question about, did we talk about this letter, the cat's den letter?
No, that's in our packet.
Okay.
You might want to refer to that.
We have several letters in the packet, and the cat's den letter was one of the most recent. He's basically, has a main concern of alcohol not being cared or served in the patio area, and that our tenants not be disturbed by noise extending late into the night.
Well, so basically, he says he has no problem with the fence, but he does have a problem with alcohol being served.
Uh-huh.
So.
So he's, no problem with a suitable fence, for the sole purpose of containing a smoking area. So that would be the neighbor to the left, we've heard, or to the west, Maxine, we've heard from. There were several letters in the packet from the Athens County Convention Visitors Bureau, basically in favor of the executive director, Paige Allos. Board of Director's Secretary for My Sister's Place was in favor.
That's actually not accurate.
It's not really in favor, it basically.
Yeah, Paige Allos' letter was in favor of the, of the beer garden.
Right.
But the other two letters are, are just pro Chris Wolf.
For his.
And Smiling Skull letters, in general, yeah. But they don't address the question of the beer garden.
They do not address the question of the beer garden. Anything else we need to address here? Okay. Testimony from the floor shall be closed, and now the board will deliberate and render a decision. You want to discuss? You ready to discuss, or go see the findings?
Well, let's get a motion first, huh?
I move the ground variance of the property at 108 West Union Street, from section 23, 04, 04A, 1A, to allow business, beer garden, to be conducted outside of an enclosed building in a B1 zone, where the requirement is for all business or services to be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building.
Okay, ten seconds.
Now we go through the motions, through the findings.
Any discussion ahead of time? No?
Maybe ask people to do it.
Okay. Practical difficulty and undue hardship.
Well, I think, as though, I mean, although this is a good law of non-smoking, or, you know, the industry has been imposed this hardship of this kind of a business, you know. And so when you get this smoking out, this nature of the business is that the people who want to go out and smoke, they probably want to hold on to their drinks, you know, it's always the tradition. So it's been a hardship imposed to the industry, I believe. And he's trying to find a solution for that, and it seems to be reasonable to me. And the other hardship would be that, you know, I mean, I don't think he really is too happy with people walk outside his bar in the street, in front of his bar, and they smoke over there. I don't know whether they carry their drinks with them or not, but as an owner, it would be a hardship for me if my customers are going outside on the street. Again, he's trying to find a solution.
I guess my question would be, is it unique to him and his business? Or does every bar in town have that same restriction and the same problem of people going outside?
It would be the same thing for all of them, yeah.
I think most of ours, there are particular hardship for this business that we would create unnecessarily, but not under the variance.
I think many of the bars have gone to outside, outside establishments. Through variances, presumably? Well, I don't know.
Not that I, not that I. No, but it's come here.
Yeah.
And this is the first one.
And also, he states, in his justification in number three, that I can exist without the additional space. So that kind of tells you there that if it was a truly hardship, he would, I would have never mentioned something like that in my statement.
Well, is a question of undueness.
What particular circumstances or conditions related to the land or buildings require the variance? I can exist without the additional space. However, I think this area, once beautified, could help accommodate more customers as well as the smoking public. So I always find it unusual when somebody comes before us and makes a statement like that.
Well, it's not that unusual. We do have people who come and say, I really want to do this, it would help my business, but I can't live without it, so, you know, it's not that unusual.
So, moving to the side, is there a hardship or difficulty, practical difficulty?
Yeah, the question is, is there something, is there something exceptional about this property that would suffer an enormous hardship unlike other businesses if we did not create the variance? Would we be creating the hardship for them? Is it something exceptional about them that applies?
And we might just differ on the board.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
Let me do, you need to say something, correct? Or can we move on?
I think we can move on.
Okay. Will the variance be interest to the area or detriment to the public welfare?
Which one are you reading?
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. Exceptional circumstances. Are there extraordinary circumstances, or?
There's exceptional circumstances to the nature of this business that, you know, that justifies maybe what he's doing is an appropriate thing, but not to other businesses, you know, like it's special to this business.
Well, then that would mean that every bar in town that wanted to have an outside patio, and it could provide it, we, I mean, we would be basically.
Well, if they have the space to provide it, then we have to look at it.
Okay, but basically, what you, if, if I followed your statement, and agreed with you, and voted on that basis, I would be making legislation for the city, rather than just trying to decide what to do in this circumstance.
That's what I was going to say, item six.
Okay, sure.
Well, I just wanted to point out that the outside businesses, the ban on outside business is particular to a B1 zone.
Okay, to the zone instead of the business.
All of them, places of genre, B2D and B3.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems to me that the exceptional circumstances would be attached to the property, not to the type of business that was being carried on there, yeah.
Well, it applies to, I mean, he's in the zone that doesn't allow it. So what's exceptional about his property that should be allowed?
Yeah.
Well, he has the space, I can see it as being attractive. But I was there today and talked to Mr. Wolf at length, and I think it's a lovely idea. But I had a lot of concerns about the fence, about the apartments next door, and about the safety, which he will address with his fences and, and, but would have to be taken care of.
Steps.
Steps, a great wire, I assume it's electric wire that goes down through there, that at one point would be very easy for somebody tall enough just to grab and pull. So all those things would have to be taken care of, and somebody apart from us would see about that.
Okay. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of the regulations would deprive the talent enjoyed by other people in the area. Well, wasn't it noted that Grinders, Tascano's, have outside seating and serving?
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Tascano's is serving alcohol outside, it sounds.
That's true, they do run it in the back, but you know. How does that happen?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Maybe it's grandfathered.
Can we, can we ask?
It could be grandfatherized.
Tascano's isn't that old. I mean, it's changed hands, right?
Right, but maybe they, I don't see how you get grandfathered.
Mr. Eshenbacher, can you help us on that?
Sorry, what?
I know you're taking notes. The rest, the local restaurants, the one just across the way is serving alcohol outside.
Tascano's.
Tascano's.
No, I don't know the particular circumstances of how they got theirs.
And what about Grinders? They don't serve alcohol.
They would be serving alcohol.
It's just food.
Grinders does have alcohol now.
They do?
They have alcohol now?
They have beer, yes.
Okay. And do they serve it outside?
I do not know.
They have seats outside?
They do.
It's not enclosed.
And I believe they're watching this one very closely, because I think he wants to do the same thing.
So what did you say, Mr. Eshenbacher?
If they're serving beer outside front there, they're not supposed to, because it's not enclosed.
Okay. Not enclosed it on.
Well, they purchase it inside, but they take it outside to drink. It's not, depending on what you call it.
Then are we not allowed to take alcohol? The people, like at the Smiling Skull, they can't take their beers out on the front sidewalk.
Yeah, but it's his private property at Grinders, still on his property.
Yeah, it's private property, yeah.
It's private property.
The part of Grinders that's out in front is on his private property still. That is not part of the sidewalk, so I don't know if they're taking beer out there or not, but they can't bring alcohol.
Well, and what about Tascano's?
Tascano's has outdoor seating, a patio.
But Paul doesn't, we don't know, and we don't have a history of why, how they got that.
Grinders?
No.
Tascano's? It's kind of hard to make a determination about, compared with other businesses in the area, if we don't really know what they're doing, you know, how they're able to do that.
Well, they just started to do it, and nobody stopped them. Okay, all right.
Maybe if you serve food with beer.
I don't know.
It started with an appetizer, and turned with a beer.
Okay, all right, so we got sort of a, okay, preservation of equal property rights?
Minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property.
Well, if you want to add, I think the objectives that he has, I think this would be minimal, but the property can be used as it is now.
Correct.
But for what his goals are, this is minimal.
Well, he does have permission to send people out to smoke, just not to take their liquor outside, their beer outside.
Absence of detriment, deauthorizing of such variance will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property.
Well, you've had some testimony that it could be a detriment.
That there's potential for detriment.
Public interest, interest.
I'm sorry, could you guys speak up a little?
Are we not talking loud enough?
Well, you're kind of mumbling.
Are we mumbling? Are we mumbling?
I didn't hear anything Mr. Wolf said.
Well, there's been public record, spoken this evening, of possible detriment to the area, if beer was allowed to be served.
Outside.
Outside.
But remember, this is kind of an enclosed with five, six-foot tall fence around it, so.
But it is also true. You were down there, and you see how close those windows are to.
I was concerned about the window, but, you know, the way he explained to me, I was satisfied that it's going to be not the wall next to the window, but far enough so that it would have a buffer.
Right. I'm very sympathetic to this project, as I think you know. I'm very sympathetic to this project, as I think you know, but I do think there are real issues to consider, and the proximity to those windows with people who agreed to live by a bar, but still, you agreed to live by a bar and the bar's inside, and now suddenly it's right outside your window. And again, I assume that all the safety issues would be taken care of, but, you know, there's still some things to consider.
Not of a general nature, the condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which variance is sought, is not of a general recurrent nature.
Not in that area. That's probably the only business that would come up with this situation. So no, it's not of a general nature.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
All right.
I vote no.
I would yes.
I think, I think I have to vote no.
Yes.
No.
He said no.
I said no.
Okay.
Mr. Wolf, is the vote clear to you?
No.
It did not pass. You did not.
Three noes and three yeses.
It was...
I didn't vote. Three noes, two yeses.
Our next appellant is case number nine dash two zero V, and it's the AMA Sign Company slash Cheap Tobacco. Mr. Eschenbacher?
It's fairly self-explanatory from the packet I gave you. I just wanted to say that the measurement of the signable wall area is done for that particular storefront from edge to edge, and for that front awning or front wall structure that was put on the front of the entire mall, I believe it was a year ago or maybe two years ago. So I just wanted to explain what the signable wall area measurement was based on, just that area.
Okay. Please tell us again.
Okay. It's just storefront to storefront edge.
Okay.
And then the front awning part that was recently put on the front of the mall that extends across there, that's the signable wall area that we use to come up with these measurements.
Okay, and the measurements are based on the size of the business?
Of that particular storefront business, yeah.
Okay. And assuming that he got the variance, it would just then could use his old sign, would that interfere with anybody else's business, with their signs?
Well, I mean, they wouldn't be able to extend the sign beyond the edges of their own storefront, so certainly wouldn't overlap.
Okay.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Joshua Preather. I'm an agent for AMA Sign Company and Cheap Tobacco. I'm here to represent this variance application today. I wanted to first clarify a little bit about what was being discussed a moment ago regarding the awning. It's actually called a sign band that's built specifically for facilitating signage. In this case, it's meant to facilitate raceway signage, cabinet signage, things of that nature. I haven't been there to verify access, but it could possibly sustain channel letter signage, anything of that nature. No ground signage, though. With that said, and I don't like to dwell on what neighbors have done, but we are here to discuss hardship. We are here to discuss detriment to the business at hand. Cheap Tobacco is in a position where, what the gentleman was speaking about, could I approach and show you guys a little more detail?
Yes.
I'll put the camera to the center. I'll move around a little bit. What we talk about when we talk about a sign band area, as you can see these pillars here, what they typically represent is a lease line, okay? Now, we go from this lease line to this lease line. We measure this height right here, okay? And then we determine the square footage of that entire area. So it isn't based, as someone was asking earlier, whether the signage would overlap or anything like that. That's not even considered. As you can see, I guess I forgot the third drawing. As you can see, signage can come in different shapes and sizes. Everybody knows that. If you look at Little Caesars, they take up nearly the entire length of their sign band. Okay, now the sign band is approximately three feet tall. Depending on the lease lines and the property that you're leasing, it could be about 28 feet is the typical property frontage, okay? When I say that, I mean from lease line to lease line as the storefront is performed. Now, what we have here with Little Caesars, and again, I don't want to dwell on what others have done. I know we come into cases of grandfathered, which I doubt that Sprint or Little Caesars won't lend to that. But I prefer that everybody's businesses thrive, okay? I don't like to see people go to the expense and the trouble to open a business only to have it fail because they're not advertised correctly. Now, when I was talking about different shapes and sizes, you can see the Little Caesars goes almost to the extent of their lease line, and that stops over here on this side just short of it. However, you look at Sprint signage, and it goes nowhere near their lease line on either side, okay? Rather than that, it actually protrudes above the canopy, as you call it, or sign band area, with their logo. Okay, now logos aren't considered signage, no matter where you are, no matter what city it is. A thousand cities, that's what it exaggerates. I've been to a lot of cities, and pretty much everybody considers that expanding above the lease line, okay? I'm going to bring this over here. Show this as well. And as you can see, the Sprint sign goes a little higher, less width, just goes less height. Okay? These are the two direct naters on either side of Cheap Tobacco. This is hideous. To me, it's absolutely disgusting, and it should all be ashamed of. I think you're spitting out on the how it got approved or who put it up. Cheap Tobacco, no, I don't agree with Mr. Greig. Bottom line is, let me go back to the podium. Bottom line is, Cheap Tobacco is not asking for anything extraordinary, okay? We understand that we're outside of what is allowable by code. We have some financial hardships, as does everybody who's opening businesses these days. The sign that is intended to move to this store is one that was at an existing store. We're trying to save the cost of actually fabricating, and that's coming from this sign company, okay? All I'm making money on is the installation here. No new fabrication. I understand his problems. I want to help him succeed so that he can keep moving forward and open any new stores. Athens is one of his target markets. He would definitely like to come here. However, what he can't do is afford to buy a new sign at this point in time to put up there. We don't want to keep that hideous banner, okay? I don't even know for sure that he'd be allowed to keep it. I can't imagine it's allowable by code. But with that said, what we'd like to do is put up a sign that is very, very, very similar in size. It's actually in between the size of the Little Caesar sign and the Sprint sign. It's smaller in height, and it leaves about six and a half feet on either side of the lease line, okay? So that it's actually compact. I will say that I think that 30% of the sign area is a little small typically. I won't speak to your code directly, but I think that's why you're finding that people are doing things like this. I don't know that they did this illegally. I would have to assume that Little Caesars acquired a variance. Possibly they were in front of you all at some point, but the signage there is definitely not, not within 30%. Okay, so our detriment is that we are surrounded by folks who have larger signage than us. Now, I heard some conversation prior to, prior to the meeting's beginning about certain businesses not actually requiring signage, about if you're a smoker, you know where to go and things like that. Not always. Cheap Tobacco, and I do some categorizations, especially for Huntington Bank and other businesses. Cheap Tobacco is what we would consider to be a destination and a target business, okay? So when you're driving by, that's what we call a target business. When you're driving by, you see it, you target it, you go there. Somebody who's never rolled their own tobacco might see a Cheap Tobacco store, say, "You know what? Let's give it a shot." Go inside, find a special on rollers, and start rolling their own cigarettes. I did it a couple of years ago. That's how I found out about Cheap Tobacco, and how I got into this business, with Cheap Tobacco. On the other hand, you have people like myself who know where the Cheap Tobacco stores are. It's on the underside of all the tube boxes that gives you addresses of where everyone is in the vicinity. You know exactly where to go. You map quest it. When you get there, all you're looking for is something that is branded, such as the yellow Cheap Tobacco sign, and it draws you directly in. So both instances are things that we're looking to accomplish with this type of signage, and are required to make our business successful. I guess in short, I'll summarize by saying our hardship, our detriment, is that we're surrounded by signage that is larger than us. We have no intention of making our sign brighter. Our candle wafer hour is going to be exactly the same as the other signage. Actually, it will be a little bit less. It will appear a little bit brighter because it's yellow. Maybe not to Little Caesars. I haven't really seen that orange light up light yet, unless it's got a diffuser on it. Sprint store, obviously, they're not real well lit. They got the white letters, and you can usually see some shadowing in there. But that's all immaterial. I just wanted to point out our hardship, our detriment, and our reason for bringing this to your attention.
The two signs that are Little Caesars and the Sprint are good quality signs I saw today, you know, impressive. Is this Cheap Tobacco, or does it not have a cheap sign?
It is not a cheap sign.
Because they used one, but it's going to be the same color as the other two.
It's in our shop already, and we've already put a fresh coat of paint on it. The face isn't impeccable from the condition. We did clean it off, if that's all that was required. It's a pan form face with first surface, second surface vinyl graphics, which means that the vinyl is on the inside so that it can't peel or chip. And then it's painted with a yellow coating, a translucent yellow coating on the inside of the plastered pan form face. It's actually a plastic that's formed to have a bubble to it. The cabinet is UL approved, okay? So Underwriter Laboratories or one of their agents have given approval that the sign is safe, is sturdy, and is suitable for installation.
Is this interiorly lit?
It is interiorly lit. Internally illuminated with HO lamps. The other two signs, one on each side of it, as you can see, the black box behind Little Caesars, do you have the photographs also?
No.
Is this the sign that was there before that had to be taken down? It used to have a bigger Cheap Tobacco sign there a couple of weeks ago.
I'm not aware of anything that was there before.
Different building, I believe, right? They were somewhere else.
Are you thinking down the street?
They just moved into this place not too long ago.
Just came in.
You're thinking by the car lot.
The U-Haul thing.
Yeah.
Did they have a huge sign there, did they?
Obviously, any business is going to go for as large as they can, if it's going
to be beneficial.
I like that one.
I just looked at where they tried to spot five, four foot letters all the way around the building. I just don't know what's on the occasion. Okay, now you see this box right here, it's painted dimension of the facade behind it. You can see it. There's a black one right here. Usually, these right here should be going to the back, so that you can't see anything there.
So these will be...
We will not be doing that type of signage. Our sign is going to be a cabinet sign, okay? Which is allowed by law.
You mean, this is not the sign?
This is the sign, okay? But it's not, to me, it looks like channel letters on a raceway.
No, it's set out.
Is it?
Yeah. It's going to be set out like this.
My drawing's color, as dimensioned, but that right there looks like that.
But we aren't really concerned really about the size of it, so...
Right, that's correct. And the size of it will leave about six and a half feet on both sides, and ample room on the front.
How much does such a sign cost?
That's a cool top hand. I think one customer did that. Three foot by 12 foot.
Okay.
And that's a minimum. That's without painting for pan form faces.
Okay.
Were installation. And then, of course, there's a charge for variance here and permits and things of that nature.
He stated that the owner of this business plans on opening more.
He said so to me. I do hear those things.
To this sign that you have that's too big for Athens be used in the next location.
Well, his expansion is in this area, okay? His expansion plans are in this area. Whether the sign can be used somewhere else or not, probably. However, we want to get this store up and running before we plan on our, plan our next one. And in order to do that, we need to do something better than that banner. We need to do something at least equitable to what our neighbors are doing.
Or within code.
Or within code, but we also have to do things that are feasible for our financial situation.
How many Cheap Tobacco stores are there?
I do not know. There's literally hundreds of them, spread out throughout Ohio and neighboring states.
But this is at the moment the only one in Athens or Athens County for the moment?
I do not know. I don't know exactly. I don't typically handle the Cheap Tobacco. I deal with them as an account executive. I'm the sales director. My salesman is actually having a baby today. So I picked up this folder and came in here. I have met with Mr. Riggs a few times, gone over the projects with him. I know what's going on in my office, but as far as how many stores they have or where they're predominantly located, I'm not sure. During projection times are when I speak money with the clients and try to figure out what their plans are, where they plan on going. I do that with my, with my sales reps so that we can kind of get a figure for, a feel for it and see what's coming in our pipeline.
It seems relevant to the question of whether it's going to be a hardship for him to build a sign.
Well, as to whether, Cheap Tobacco's are franchised, okay? So regardless of how many Cheap Tobacco locations there are, I guess specifically we would want to talk to how many locations Mr. Riggs owns.
And you don't know how many?
And I don't know that either. I can tell you that although the stores are currently functioning, that he doesn't have any stores that are sitting there without signage, that we could take this one and put it up instead. If that was the case, we would have already done that. When he went into this store, he fully expected that the sign, based on the ones that were on either side of him, without having the knowledge base that I do, would know to check the code, as you said. First thing I do when I talk to a customer or when I get a new location from a customer, emailed to me, however they may come, first thing I do is I check the code. I have a file cabinet beside my desk that consists of nothing but city code. I can cite to you sections of Columbus city code off the top of my head, including mask factors and exposures and things of that nature. I know what I'm talking about when I go out and I deal with cities that I'm used to dealing with. I did familiarize myself with Athens code prior to coming to this meeting today. I only had about six hours notice before I had to be here, but I did as much research as I could. We're really not that far outside of what the allowable code is. I know you're looking at the 29 square feet, and we're looking at 17 square feet. Again, if you look at Little Caesars, if you scale this drawing based on a three-foot door, which I was just doing sitting there, it doesn't even take a scale roller to do. If you scale Little Caesars, and we take off one foot, three feet, four feet, it's 24 square feet or 24 feet long, that's at least two foot tall, and that's being, you know, restricted. Okay, so two feet times 24 feet, we're looking at 48 square feet of signage for Little Caesars. I don't have a problem with that. I think it looks good as for the building, as long as you don't get a whole bunch of them crammed in close together so that you can't tell where one stops and the other begins. Now, I'm not asking you to totally change the code. What I'm asking you to do is give consideration to the fact that, and I understand where you're coming from about Mr. Greig's having signage in other, there are stores in other locations, why can't he use a sign there? Those stores already have signs.
No, I didn't ask whether he couldn't. Mr. Lovell asked whether he couldn't get a sign made.
Well, for my cost, it's about $1,400. Once I sell it to him, it's considerably more.
Do you have any, are you aware, or do you have any knowledge of the van that is parked in the parking lot there that says Cheap Tobacco with an arrow pointing towards the store?
No, I am not. Our mobile graphics part of, part of your code restriction.
I believe that's a freestanding sign that I think is technically illegal.
He wanted to have it on his own vehicle for purpose of his own business. Can't advertise somebody else's business.
Advertising.
There's a lot of headway being made on mobile graphics and restrictions such as there's some cities that are actually disallowing people to drive through unless you actually have a business within that town to drive through it with mobile graphics. I'm working midwest on association and I'm...
Somebody starting a new business, $1,400 doesn't seem like a huge expenditure to me. But I'm not Mr. Riggs.
You really need to think about it in terms of how many bags of tobacco he has to sell to pay for that sign.
Well, you know, he's already got the rent and some other expenses, so I don't want to go into that too much. It doesn't sound excessive to me. But I guess what I'm wondering, if it is a hardship, if maybe we could consider granting him a temporary use permit so that he could use his current sign for one year, at the end of one year, when presumably he's either prospered or not prospered, then he would be forced to take that sign down and get a proper sign.
That seems acceptable to me. It's obviously something I'd want to talk to Mr. Riggs about, but it sounds acceptable to me. I think that if the business prospers and the sign is advantageous to him, then I think that he would be willing to reinvest. We could take that sign, move it to another store where, as you said, code allows, and reinstall a new sign that code will allow for. I will say this, however. Given the current circumstances, I would not advise my customer to put up a sign that is still considerably smaller than either of his neighbors.
I understand that, but I guess I would hope, I don't know how they got the signs they have. We do have a code.
And as I said, I don't want to dwell on it.
Right, so presumably people should comply in as much as it's possible to do so.
Well, Betty says in here, if the variance is denied, cheap tobacco will have to look at the location, possibly not in Athens. So obviously, he has talked about this.
Okay, so...
Doesn't claim anyway, yeah.
Well, you know, it must be a hardship for him, otherwise he wouldn't say that, you know.
That's not necessarily the case.
Yeah, that's not necessarily true. And I advise the people who are coming here tonight not to necessarily use that. I don't think that it's an appropriate way of approaching the situation. To me, it sounds more of a threat, and I don't think that that's necessarily the best way of doing things. I think that we have an actual hardship here, so I didn't come armed with threats. I apologize that you all received that, so I kept it to the side here. He has expressed to me, and not in a threatening manner, that he doesn't know whether he'll be able to keep the store open if he can't get people to come in there. Those are his exact words, which makes perfect sense.
And he doesn't need that tacky sign that he has.
And that tacky sign says less for him than actually not having a sign at all.
So he needs a sign.
A sign without business is a sign of no business, but that sign is a sign of a business going out.
Well, I don't know how anybody else feels about a conditional use or whether that's even viable plan.
Well, I'm just looking at the other signs that are, you know, supposedly...
About a year and a half, two years ago, they redid the front of that building. They took down all the panels and put them back up, and they have put them back up. It looks like in different locations than what was approved. And in the process, Little Caesar's added their Little Caesar guy that was not originally approved.
I was wondering why.
And they may be getting a letter from us on that.
I think if it's going to be along the same size as the other ones, you know, why, what is the big...
Well, they have a little forest. He's before us. And we had no control over them, sticking the Little Caesar guy.
If I may, you do have some control over them because I happened to have seen on your website today that there are code enforcement agents. I do not wish to send them out on these guys, but fading by the control is not necessarily the case.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
I'm finished, thank you.
You're good. Okay. Any questions? You're good?
Okay.
Yes?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anybody here in favor?
Of what?
Speaking in favor.
Speaking in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not true.
Okay, is there anybody here in opposition? Okay. Paul or John, is there anything you want to add? Okay. Testimony from the floor shall be closed. The board will deliberate and render a decision.
How do we address Betty's suggestion of changing the request? We would have to all agree that that was a possible, at least temporary, solution and then strike to the motion that way unless the representative needs to speak to his client and then they would, in that case, have to come back to us.
Maybe we should address what we have and then if he wants to come back for a conditional use or anything else, they can continue.
That's a possibility.
Yeah, we can vote on this variance and then if we deny it, then we could recommend that a conditional use permit might receive more favorable ayes and ahs.
That's right.
If you deny it, he's going to want to get that sign up immediately, so I don't know if he can put the condition to it right now. In my recommendation, he's going to want to get something up there other than that banner.
That is the case.
So what are you saying?
Take the vote on the first one first, see what the outcome is. And then if it is denied, say at that point, we will grant a condition if the owner is willing to do so, to take with that sign up.
Okay, so we could go ahead and vote it and then if he wanted to, he could.
And then you'd have to vote on that, I suppose.
All right, good.
Okay, practical difficulty and undue hardship.
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry? We need a motion.
I move in case 09-20V, 906 East State Street. The appellant is requesting a variance from section 23.03.13 to allow a wall sign to be 51% in size of the signable wall area, where 29.8 square feet, or 29.8 square feet, where 30% in size of the signable wall area, or 17.5 square feet is the permitted maximum.
Second.
Go ahead.
I already got one. All right. Practical difficulty and undue hardship.
I believe it really, as Betty stated, it's part of doing business to budget in for a sign.
Signage.
And failure to know what the code is in the area you're about to do business is not an excuse not to have the proper sign. So I don't really think it's an undue hardship.
Exceptional circumstances?
That's not exceptional.
Well, I guess you could argue that it's exceptional that the signs to either side of him don't seem to be in compliance, but we don't know whether they will be asked to come into compliance or not.
Or how they even got that way.
I don't know how they got that way. And so the question is, should they be brought in compliance or should he just be given the privilege of not complying?
Yeah, which I don't think he should, but that would fall more under the equal property rights. I mean, if you looked on either side, you should say, well, I should be able to make my sign outside of code size that I feel those two signs are. But unfortunately, we...
He could go to code with a complaint like that, but I don't think coming here, it's not our job to grant variance because some decisions have been...
Right.
Or weren't monitored.
Well, these stores have a small frontage, you know, all of it, and, you know, 17 and a half square, compared to the other two signs that are really small.
Well, now, wait a minute. 25 feet is what he's allowed.
Well, he's not exceeding the front of size, I mean, his area, but 17.5 square feet is allowed maximum. And 17.5 compared to what he was calculating about 50, which I agree with his calculation, is quite a small. If he wants to comply with the code, that sign is going to go clearly small. You do have a small frontage, but, you know, you have to be able to see the storefront for a distance, you know.
No, you don't, because there's a yellow van sitting in the parking lot.
Well, that, we can't discuss that right now.
Why not? I mean, I'm not a smoker, but I'm perfectly aware of where I would need to go to get cheap tobacco.
There is that Mothra place, they have a van also, that Mathis place, they all have vans.
All I'm saying is, everyone knows that that store is there because the van is there.
I didn't note them today.
Oh.
I saw the banner.
I see it every time I go to Kroger, so.
All right, we're at preservation of equal property rights, which I think we discussed. Some of the issues with the signage on the other storefronts. Anything else to add to that? Minimum variance.
No, it can still operate with a smaller sign.
Assuming that we want a grand variance, you know, how minimal is that? That's the question, you know, and...
Well, it says in the code how minimal.
Yeah, well, they would have come up with that number if, for a sign code, John, or they would have felt that that was satisfactory for a business.
But what happens to the other businesses?
I don't know. We'd have to get this person to look it up and try to find out.
Okay, absence of detriment.
Well, the detriment we're considering is not to the business. It's considered to other businesses in the area and...
Or the public interest.
Or the public interest. And I don't think it would bother the other businesses, but the question is whether it's against the public interest in the sense that you have a code that asks you to do this and we decided to ignore it.
Well, you could say that, you know, the sign is too small, maybe people are trying to find it behind an accident, just trying to locate what it is. But if you see it far enough distance, then you don't have to cause an accident.
A safety issue.
We don't deal with safety.
That was just ingress and egress, okay.
Yes, ingress and egress. Okay, not of a general nature.
Well, we are sometimes frequently asked to worry about signs, but it's not been every day current, so I don't think they're going to change it any time soon, but I don't know. Maybe they'll decide that all signs are too small.
You know, when I was standing today seeing the signs, both the Sprint and Little Caesar's, they looked reasonable to me, you know.
I agree.
From the street, you know, so from where I was standing, they were nice and, you know, I mean, this probably would be in line with the...
I believe Sprint's is okay because that's a double wide, double space. Theirs is okay because they have a bigger space.
State Lot has a great big sign, so does Art Lot, but they're bigger businesses, so...
Okay. All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Maybe we'll start at that, okay?
No, I'm voting no.
I want a yes.
No.
No.
So now let's consider.
Okay, so... So now we want to consider whether or not it should be a conditional, temporary use, conditional use.
In that case, we don't have to go through the findings, I don't think. We just have to consider whether this seems reasonable or not.
Let him know that it's only for one year, right?
Yes, exactly.
Temporary use permit for one year, and after one year, if he's still there, he must comply with the...
And he should be prosperous because he'll have this nice big sign. And then we can know where he is and then he can move his signs along. So we do need a motion for that, though.
I move that we grant a temporary use permit...
To...
That's it. To 906 East State Street for one year.
To use?
To use their existing sign that they have that's larger than code. And after one year of still in business, must comply with code size.
They could maybe apply for, have you, how to three years?
They could what?
They can renew the conditional use for up to three years, I believe.
Well, okay.
They could come back and ask. We're only giving it to them for a year.
Right, they'd have to come back.
Yeah.
And I suppose they could ask for a request of variance again and see how things go then.
And maybe our sign law will change. Our ordinance may change within the next year. It is being reviewed. It is being reviewed.
And maybe a small people will be banned altogether in the world.
We're very, we want to have more smokers to be inside this building. All in favor of it.
Before we say all in favor of, could we just say exactly how big that current sign is and put that in the conditional use?
Yeah, I don't know how big it actually is. Do you know the dimensions of your current sign that you want to place?
Was it what you'd like to install?
Yes.
Or the banner that's on it? The exact dimensions are 45 inches high by 15 foot 8 inches.
Okay, and so it is 29.8 square feet.
Right. 140.
No, it's not right. Yeah.
Yeah, it's in...
All right, so we seconded that motion that you just did.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. So they're good to go for a year.
Good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we do both of, yes, we need to do each of these singly because they're separate. Okay, so we're ready to hear case number 09-21V, Mr. James Cody, 49 Stewart Street. So Paul, what do you have for us?
Mr. Stewart's request, or Mr. Cody's requesting to take a building on Stewart, 49 Stewart, and add a third floor to existing two-story, three-unit building and create a third floor on top of that to make a three-story, three-unit building. His variance is for a front and side yard setback, and also he requested for a flood variance, which at this time, we got some information today that we'd like to table the flood part of this application until myself and the city planner, Paul Loeb, who's also a flood administrator, have a chance to review the appraisal to determine if this use or this condition will even be required. So that said, we still need to go through the setback part of the...
Does that mean that Mr. Cody would have to come back again to us?
If we determine that it is not in compliance, yes, it would be, he'd have to come back.
But assuming that it is, then that's all taken.
And if it's, exactly. And since we just got the information today or yesterday, we haven't had a full chance to look at it, and therefore, we haven't granted him or actually given him a denial, which you have to have to come here. So he hasn't received a denial from us yet in regards to the flood hazard application. So we'll determine that as we look at it.
So we're just looking at the setbacks?
Yeah, we'll just look at the setbacks tonight, and then if the other part is in compliance, then we don't need to bring it back.
All right. Mr. Cody, would you like to come to the podium? State your name again for us and your address.
My name is James Cody, and I live at 41 Stroud's Run here in Athens.
Thank you.
This particular property is already a triplex, existing triplex under the code. And as you heard, I wish to just add one floor at the top. I am staying entirely within the existing footprint, so there is no increase in the lack of conformity to the bulk control. And I would like to point out that the zone here is R3 multifamily. This particular property is right across the street, literally, from a dormitory. It is adjacent to a university parking lot and kitty corner, more parking, more university, McCracken Hall, et cetera. So it's very clear what this area is. This is a university and university housing area. So I'm arguing that I want to continue to carry out the purpose or the intent of the code for this zone, and in particular, the comprehensive plan, which suggests that the area down here, the so-called Mill Street area, is a good area for dense housing and in support of university student housing in particular. And as you know, you've had, there are several developments already going on down there. This is part of a general redevelopment of the area. And the hardship, if I was denied, I think, is that the setback requirements, in this case, since that's all I have, is the setback requirements. I think we have an issue facing the board in general here that if you think about the property in Athens, off the top of my head, half of it is non-conforming, if not more. When I look down Maplewood, I can't see a house that is conforming. And my assertion then is that anyone who, for example, on Maplewood, wanted to close in their back porch and make it a sunroom, would have to get, according to the interpretation, as I've spoken to Mr. Paskey, have to get a variance from you, period. There'd be no way around it. And that means that this is a general hardship for the city. If we do not allow reasonable variances for the setback requirement, we're going to constrain the vast majority of property in this town to stay within its existing footprint forever. So I explain this is an extreme hardship. Now, I think that there may be cases where you will want to deny it because they want to expand in a way that encroaches on a neighbor or et cetera. I mean, obviously, there will be cases, but in this case, there's no problem to the rear, as you've heard. To the one side is a street, Union Street. To the other side is the university parking lot. To the front is Stewart Street. So I am not in any way encroaching on someone's aesthetics or property line or, you know, any of the other common sense reasons for setbacks. And indeed, by sticking within the existing footprint, I think I am more than fulfilling the spirit... And indeed, by sticking within the existing footprint, I think I am more than fulfilling the spirit of the code, which is, don't, you know, don't exceed, you know, stay within a reasonable use of the property. But I would like you to seriously consider my point of, is anyone going to modern, to modernize or upgrade their properties in Athens? Because let's face it, the bulk controls were set up for newer developments, you know, and houses that had, the lots that had the room for that kind of a house. And the older houses don't have the room. By definition, the code has in it a variance procedure for properties that, you know, are on lots that are too small. So the code envisioned this very issue of giving variances for lack of conformity to setbacks. They had to, they knew what the city structure was in the older housing. So I feel that I'm improving the area. The property will be much improved when I'm finished. I will be in conformity with the zoning intent of the area, and also the comprehensive city plan. And I think that the term smart development applies here, as we have seen in recent discussions. We want to have development, it has been said by some people, and it should be smart. It should be done in a rational, reasonable way. And I think this property is clearly a property where the variance would be in the better interests of Athens, and in the spirit of the code. Thank you. Yes?
The building is pretty tall already, but when you add the third one, are you going to be below the maximum height?
Definitely. I have the parking, I've been to the tree commission.
Yeah, I guess the maximum height is.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm five feet below that. If you wish to see me here as a site plan.
We have a copy of it.
You have a copy of that?
They have your hand-drawn one, Jim.
I'd like to see that one, actually, since I have a hand-drawn one.
Thank you, John.
Oh, I guess I didn't get that. I mean, maybe, I just, that's my fault.
No, that's not hand-drawn.
No, we got, we got, we got the hand-drawn.
A smaller version of that.
Are you reconfiguring the current parking lot? Because when I drove through there today, it, are you reconfiguring the current parking lot spaces? So you're using what's there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was an existing parking lot.
Right, right.
He is taking some spots out. There's currently, I think, sixteen parking spaces.
Oh, no, that's already gone.
There are eleven right now.
Yeah.
Well, this shows ten.
Am I looking at the right one?
This shows ten on here.
Okay.
I saw the number eleven.
One, two, three, four, five. This is, this is forty-nine, right? So where are the rest of them? Six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Ten spaces?
The, I'm taking another spot from over at fifty-six.
Well, when I was at fifty-six today, I only counted eleven, over there were eleven marked spaces.
That was forty-nine. That was forty-nine.
No.
There is no parking space in fifty-six.
Yeah, he doesn't have them made in fifty-six by McCracken, I mean, by the parking lot. He doesn't have the spaces there.
Okay, maybe I'm, maybe I'm.
Deed restricted.
Put them right up to the house, is that how your spots are going to go?
That's the next, that's the next.
That's the next one.
Okay. So, this one that you just gave us, that I'm actually looking at here, is, this is forty-nine, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, how many places have you got, please?
Ten, uh, that are approved by the code office. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
And, so, if I'm going to put eleven people in there, I've already discussed with John, uh, I've got thirteen potential spaces over fifty-six, having one deed restricted from over fifty-six. Right across the street, put it within the five hundred feet.
Two fifty.
Huh?
Two fifty.
All right.
Is it two fifty? I thought it was five hundred.
Is this, this is forty-nine, right? So fifty-six has marked spaces. Remember?
It's not, no, there's nothing there, nothing there. It's not paved or anything, no. And forty-nine is all paved and marked and numbered.
Plan what he's gonna do.
Yeah.
So John, which is what?
Well.
If he wants to use a parking place at fifty-six, doesn't he have to get a variance for that?
No. To the own folks, so you can be restricting one parking space to the other.
It's easy on a lot of properties. Yeah, that's why I've got fifty-six.
It's all graded here, I mean, there's gravel, and it's all messed up right around here. I don't think he has anything there yet.
I, I think I've already worked out the parking with Mr. Paskey, so I think. Or you can refer to him if you wish.
These will both be Title Forty-ones as well, so we'll clarify all that. And the numbers were okay when we reviewed it, so.
So, uh, we were talking earlier about, I know the flood thing isn't, it's off the table right now, but in terms of the height issue, if you have to go up, it'll be within that five feet of existing space that he has up there?
He only needs to go up three or four inches.
Three or four inches?
Yes.
Okay!
Yes. I, I, if I have to get a variance, it's for three inches.
The three inches is for what?
For the flood part.
If, if.
If he fills it.
If I have to get one, it's for three inches.
If he fills it.
You see me back here asking you.
For three inches?
Do you want me to have three inches?
All right.
Okay. Since I'm totally confused, forty-nine, if you're going toward the university, is on the left-hand side? Okay, so I've just got the numbers confused. So that's the one that has the big sycamore tree in front now, and so you're going to remove that?
Yes, it's a real hazard to the house.
Right, okay, and so.
Again, the tree commission, I don't know what that was.
All right, so that's already done.
Yeah, that's already done.
Great.
Yeah, all you have is this issue.
Okay, all right.
The setbacks.
Okay.
All right. Anything else for us, Mr. Cody? Any other questions for Mr. Cody?
Well, are there any other questions that I could address?
I do have one. Oh, I'm sorry to go back to the parking, but I thought you had twelve spaces.
Could we please?
Well, I just want to know.
Well, but I don't want to do that now, I'm going to do setbacks, please.
We will.
Let John do it.
I just see inconsistency in the twelve.
I'm sorry, it's not.
He has ten spaces, approved spaces there. He's allowed to take two spaces from fifty-six.
Oh, two, okay, I thought he had said one. So now he needs fourteen of the other proper. Fourteen, fourteen.
Are there any other questions, relevant to setbacks, that I could respond to, please?
Yeah.
I'm, yeah.
All right. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to go through the meeting, but.
Yep. All righty. So, thank you, Mr. Cody. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. Testimony from the floor shall be closed, the board will deliberate and render a decision. So let's go through the findings.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
Make a motion.
I move a grant of variance to the property of Forty-Nine Stewart Street from section twenty-three, ten, Table A, schedule of bulk controls to allow an existing building improved over fifty percent of its current value to have a front setback of nine point twenty-five feet, where twenty-five feet is the minimum requirement, and a side setback of one point fifty-eight feet, where twelve point five feet is the minimum requirement.
Eddie, I think you ought to start that again, because we don't know at this point if it's going to be over fifty percent of the value, which that's the part that's needed for the flood. So I think we just take the fifty.
Want to just leave that out?
Leave the fifty percent number out.
All right. Got that? That's up. All right. Where twelve point five feet is the minimum requirement, and from section twenty-five oh-three.
Oh, we're not doing it.
We're leaving that out, too, okay, period, stop right there.
I just want to have a comment in here, because this is a cornered lot, shouldn't it be twenty-five and twenty-five from both sides? Why is not, why is not both sides? I mean.
Because the, the way the rule reads, Steve Pearson used to say there's two fronts and two rears.
Right.
We're interpreting it now that there's a front and there are sides.
Okay.
On a street corner, it has to be twenty-five feet for what's called a principal street.
Right, right.
For the side street, it has to be half of the twenty-five, or twelve and a half.
Is this something new, or always been?
It's a matter of interpretation.
Sorry.
Okay, so, that's clear, right? We stopped before the question.
We just need a second.
Second.
All right.
Can you read the whole thing?
You want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, probably.
All right. Practical difficulty and undue hardship, because of exceptional, extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes.
Then the practical difficulty is that this place needs to be fixed up, and.
That's not the difficulty, John, I disagree.
Well, there's the hardship, you know, there's the hardship.
I know, but it has nothing to do with whether it does or does not need to be fixed up, in my mind. The exceptional circumstance is what Mr. Cody alluded to.
Yeah.
He has a narrow lot, as all the lots along the street are narrow, and it, to, to deny a variance when there is an exceptional circumstance, uh, that in fact applies to everyone along the street. It's exceptional, but it is also general. But he has a circumstance where he has a very narrow lot, and it would be very difficult. He would have a skinny little house if he wanted to comply with his.
Well, that's the hardship.
That's the hardship. And that's the exception, is the narrow lot.
Yeah?
Okay. Exceptional circumstances, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone.
This is what she said.
Well, but everybody else has a narrow lot, too, you just have to face that.
Yeah, that's the exception for that thing, but what is the hardship? The hardship is that he cannot do anything with the property because, because of the law.
Here is a place where you cannot say that his property is exceptional in the zone, because it's not. Everybody has the same problem. So, in this instance, in my mind, we almost have to ignore this, because it does apply to everybody in the zone. But his is also, the circumstance is difficult, it creates a hardship.
Up down the road, all these homes have to be renovated eventually.
And you cannot do it unless.
And I think he's got the last two on the street.
Right. So.
And he wouldn't be here unless the renovation is over fifty percent.
Right.
If it was under fifty percent.
Yeah, it didn't happen to you.
He could build within the footprint, which doesn't meet the setbacks.
No, he would have to be here anyways.
To upgrade?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but he's staying under the footprint.
Who's twenty percent, the one that made you there?
Yeah.
Or it could be utilized as it is now, as a two-story rental, as opposed to a three-story now.
That is true, but we haven't gotten that yet.
Okay, preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone and the same vicinity, while a granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone and the same vicinity.
Now, unfortunately, like you stated, most of that, almost all the houses there have been granted this.
The ones facing Stewart Street. Any other comments there? Minimum variance, the variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property.
Not to me, minimum would be to use it as it is and not even add on. That's not what he's asking.
Well, I guess you just have to say it does, it increases the use of the property, it doesn't increase the footprint. The thing that struck me down there today is that the whole area has just turned into a vast concrete basin, and we're adding on to that, but the pre-commission has. There are, there will be trees, and I assume a bit of grass, but the impression that you get, in general, that is everything is taken over. That's what I said.
That struck me as well. Very strong. Absence of detriment, the authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. No. The only issue of public interest is it's all becoming cement.
Yes. Well, and I think on the comprehensive code, people who wrote that, it seemed perfectly reasonable to have high density here. There have been sort of unintended consequences, but that's not necessarily Mr. Cody's fault.
Sorry. Not of a general nature, the condition or situation of a specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which variances saw one or the other in combination is not of so general or recurrent a nature as to make reasonably practical, practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such a condition or situation.
Why do you not think this is getting close to where the planning commission or the, the code should be changed? With all these properties so small, and if this is going to start happening a lot in the future, that rather than come before us, let them go before another.
It took them five or six years to do the comprehensive plan, so I'm not looking for any real change on this to back out of it, if that's what you mean.
Not to back out of it, but it sounds like it's going to be happening a lot in our future. And I don't know if I want to be the one that says, let it happen, as opposed to.
But it's already happened. What else is there? There are just a few more things around down there that can be intensified.
So then, so that area's gone, but, you know, in my neighborhood or your neighborhood, that, that, that all happens again.
Well.
So therefore, the code may be needed to look at.
We're our word. Your residential zone is probably not R-three, so it's an R-three.
But it's a good point, and we could discuss it another time. All righty, we need to vote. Start.
I'll vote no.
I would yes.
I would yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, let's go to case number two, for you, Mr. Cody. Now hearing case zero-nine dash twenty-two V, James Cody, Fifty-Six Stewart Street. John, do you have anything to add, or Paul?
Well, just that, in terms of Fifty-Six Stewart, we don't need to go through the flood elevation variance request, because Mr. Cody has told Mr. Paskey that at Fifty-Six Stewart Street, he intends to fill in the basement. He also intends to restructure or design the first floor to meet the minimum requirements for that flood elevation. Right now, it's, I think, three inches below, the first floor is three inches below the requirement. And he's told us that he intends to restructure the floor there so that it will meet that minimum requirement, so there won't be the need for any flood elevation variance, as long as Mr. Cody says here that that is his intent.
That is my intent.
Okay.
So it's just the setbacks again? Just the setbacks.
Just the setbacks again.
Okay, Mr. Cody, I think we know who you are and where you live, all right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Fifty-six was not a duplex, it was a single unit. But I own the three houses going north on Stewart, and purchased this so that I could continue to have that type of building. Uh, the others that I built were duplexes, this was triplex, because I'm trying to come up with smaller units. The duplexes had five-bedroom units, I'd rather have smaller units, so four, four and three is my intent. And, um, the, again, the parking lots all around it, surrounding it, are university. And it's literally, you can stand in the backyard of this property, throw a tennis ball and hit McCracken. So, I would say it's in the same spirit as the other houses. And I'm going to, I think, improve the property greatly and create good housing and quality housing for the students. And I think. And I think it's another, a very similar case to the one I just discussed, so I won't go through all those arguments again, if I may. I would simply say that I think that the city will be happy with what I produce down there. It'll be much better than what's there.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, testimony from the floor shall be closed. The board will deliberate and render a decision. And we need a motion.
Okay, go for it.
I move in case 09-22V at 56 Stewart Street to grant a variance from Section 2310, Table A, Schedule of Bulk Controls, to allow an existing building, and I crossed the rest of that piece out, to have a front.
That was over 50%. 56 Stewart is definitely an over 50% improvement.
Yes, but if he brings it into compliance, we don't have to do anything on the flood.
But you can go ahead and leave on the phrase.
Improved over 50% of its current value to have a front setback of 12.25 feet, where 25 feet is the minimum requirement, and a side setback of four feet, where 4.95 feet or 10% of the width of the lot is the minimum requirement.
Go through the findings, practical difficulty and undue hardship.
Because once again, the exceptional circumstances, the existing size of the lot and the fact that he's going to stay in that same footprint.
It seems like we shouldn't have to go through the findings, if it's just exactly like.
Well, I won't read all the, I'll just, we'll go, exceptional circumstances.
Lot size.
Lot size.
Lot size and the fact that the comprehensive plan calls for density and student housing.
And that's the general nature of what's there. Preservation of equal property rights. That's what all the other owners, and that's what is happening in that area already. Minimum variance. Reasonable use. Absence of detriment.
Well, it's not, it's not much different from any of the other properties, except there are a few left that haven't been expanded, but most of them have.
Not of a general nature. All right. Okay, let's take a vote. Kay, you want to start?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay. And do we need to do minutes for last term?
Two months. August and September?
August and September.
I didn't find anything on this.
No, I didn't either. I was okay with the minutes. Are we need the minutes?
I know, except the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Anything else we need to do?
Any other items of business? Are we done, folks?
I guess Greg is going to take the chair next time, and then.
Greg is going to chair next time?
Well, unless one of the alternates would like to.
It would be my guess.
I mean, I have Tuesday night commitments, and I have to cancel every zoning board meeting.
I thought we were looking into whether alternates were supposed to chair.
I think we were just talking about that. I think whatever.
Didn't Mr. Lang say he had objections to alternates?
Mr. Lang has no objections, so.
Kay, have you chaired a meeting yet?
No, but why don't, doesn't Lisa do it?
Because Lisa has.
As long as one of you would be willing to do so, I could, my Tuesday night.
Yeah.
I'm happy to.
If you would never come again.
That would be a problem.
This could possibly happen.
That's not a good idea.
In order to, in order for the alternates to get their beat.
I think they'll get in another circumstance. I think our meeting is adjourned. Is our meeting adjourned?